...to order. Please rise for the superintendent of the school building committee meeting, George Rockland. The budgetary is to divide.
Yeah, by the way. United States.
To the public, for which it stands. One nation, under our.
Yes.
We believe in justice.
And justice for all.
Mr. Haywood, this knowledge, yes. You called the order together from the two building committee as well. So right now, we just, there are no agenda adjustments for both committees. So the agenda items for the school committee, public comment, any comments on the public? Say anything?
No.
Public speaker. I'll go by the agenda here.
Yeah, and then it's different, so. There are no agenda adjustments for the school building committee at all. This meeting is being recorded. Because we have remote participation, all of our votes will be done by roll call. Agenda items for the building, school building committee. Public comment, are there any comments on public on the school building committee? Construction, next, none?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Chair.
I'm sorry, cut you off, we're going, just for the record. Well, just, just to record the record about the executive session.
I'm sorry.
No, that's fine, we'll be right on time.
So at the conclusion of this next meeting, we'll be stepping into executive session and not to reconvene?
We'll, we'll.
We'll do a little bit of a tell-up session?
Yeah, alright, thank you.
Okay, um, there were no comments. On right now, I'll turn it over to Kevin Sullivan from Left Field for recommendations from the CM subcommittee, the construction manager at RIS.
Thank you. For full units of business, I'd like to introduce myself, my name is Kevin Sullivan. As indicated, I'm going to be joining the project management team for Left Field, well, Jen Zalbom, eternity leave. I grew up right down the street, very excited and happy to work with all of them. So the first, next slide please. Yep, so as, I think most of you will be aware, during the CM procurement process, we recently, on Monday night, interviewed five shorters from CM risk firms, including Suffolk Construction, Attorney Construction, Consignor Construction, Lee Kennedy Construction, and Gilbain Construction. We included all five interviews on the night. The following day, on the 10th, the subcommittee met, deliberated, had conversations, and formally ranked, scored and ranked the proposals, the interviews, and the price proposals. And based on those rankings, we are making an recommendation to enter into a contract with the top-ranked firm. Suffolk Construction can be part of the next one? Do you have any more?
Okay. Any other discussion from anybody else on the committee?
Mr. Chair, just want to say thank you to our project team, folks from Left Field and from DRA, as well as the members of the, of the subcommittee for their work. That's Bob Mello, Bob Mahoney, and myself, as well as, as well as Carl and Kevin, along with Linda Porter from Left Field. Very talented firm, showing an interest in our school project and a very deliberate process. So I'm, I'm happy we're at this point to be able to move this forward.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, I'll undertake a motion to authorize the superintendent-director to execute a contract with Suffolk Construction as substantially presented in the IRA P, subject to any additional changes deemed necessary by the superintendent-director in the consultation with legal counsel. Motion. Motion by Rockland?
Second.
Second by Abington. Do I have any discussion?
Mr. Chair. The motion that you read and that was, that was made essentially says you were in the process of working through the remaining contract language with Suffolk. There may be minor adjustments that we'll make in concert with our school district attorney, and then I'll move ahead with that. The goal is to get Suffolk on board as part of the project team as soon as possible, and they're working actively with Left Field on that right now.
Okay, thank you. I'll take a roll call vote, asking each member to vote. And if roll call, Bob Haywood, yes. Tom Hickey?
Yes.
Sandy Baldwin?
Yes.
George Cooney, on?
I believe so, Bob.
George Cooney?
He's muted.
He's muted. Okay, I'll come back to him. Jim Cottlin?
Yes.
Bob Mahoney?
Yes.
Jack Manning?
Yes.
Bob Mello?
Yes.
Frank Mollman? Frank, you on? Tom Petroselli?
Yes.
Dustin Ritten?
Yes.
Dan Salbucci?
Yes.
Pete Boyle?
Yes.
George Cooney, are you on?
Yes, I am, and I vote yes.
Thank you, sir. Motion carries. Now, your question. Okay. Amendment for the school committee, receiving public comment, any comments for the school committee? Calling them and seeing them as a public hearing, school choice? Okay, I'll, I'll make the motion. Second. Okay, motion, Hanover, second by Noel. This is going to be called a roll call vote as well. I have to read something first?
Uh, sorry, Mr. Chair. We'll, if we have a hearing and there's no public comment, uh, there's no comment during the hearing, we can then close the hearing and then take action. Yeah, if, if there's no comment during the hearing.
Okay. So when you just close, any discussion, so we just close the hearing? Okay? Yeah. And I moved, oh, South Shore research.
That's what I thought, so we need is a vote first, and then we'll open it, then we'll close it?
Yeah. Yep.
Yeah. We get a vote over.
That's what I'm. We need to read it.
Got it. So what we have, I'm sorry, what we need to do is we just need to record a motion, then we're going to, we're suspending the hearing. So the first roll call will be to open the hearing.
Opening, okay.
And then, and then a roll call to close it.
Yeah. And quite now, we know this. That's why you guys want to record a motion. Yeah. Got a motion to open the hearing? Motion, Noel? Second. Whitman? Any discussion about the hearing? And we met CNN. We'll do a roll call vote. Abington?
Yes.
Cohasset?
Yes.
Hanover?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Get it all. Noel?
Yes.
Hey, Rockland, here's Situit?
Yes.
And Whitman?
Yes.
That's me this way. Now, the discussion is involved, so I'll undertake a motion to close the hearing. I moved that the South Shore Regional. Am I, Captain?
I'm sorry, that'll be the next act, we'll take it bottom.
Okay.
To close the hearing, Lendel.
I'm sorry, I had to do that before we closed the hearing. Counting jazz. I'll make the motion for voting. Yeah. Motion, second, motion Whitman, second Noel. Again, another roll call vote. Abington?
Yes.
Cohasset?
Yes.
Hanover?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Rockland? Yes. Situit? Is it joint, Jack? Well, Whitman?
Yes.
Yes.
So that is a vote, we're not closing the hearing. Mr. Haywood? Sir. I read the whole hand notice. I moved that the South Shore Regional School District not participate in the school choice program for the school year 2024 and 2025 because the school district has an established process for admitting students who reside outside the school district.
Situit, second.
Good motion by Hanover. Second by Situit. Any discussion on that matter? Anybody? Again, go to roll call vote. Abington?
Yes.
Cohasset?
Cohasset, yes.
Hanover?
Yes.
Hanson, Frank?
Yeah.
Noel?
Yes.
Rockland, yes. Situit?
Yes.
And Whitman?
Yes.
That is a vote, not to join school choice. So now we look through, undertake a motion to approve the minutes? That's my duty. Motion, Hanover? Second, Abington?
Second, Abington.
Okay, any discussion on the minutes? Hearing them and seeing them, roll call vote to approve the minutes? Abington?
Yes.
Cohasset?
Yes.
Hanover?
Yes.
Hanson, Frank?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Rockland, yes. Situit?
Yes.
And Whitman?
Yes.
Thank you. Student advisory. My pleasure for the last time to introduce this building here. Have you done precept this yet?
Um, for Skills USA, two students, Brooke Stoll and Sophia Grasso, are going to Nationals June 24th through the 28th in Atlanta, Georgia. Um, touch a truck event, June 1st here at the school for, uh, to raise money for Skills USA. Um, Skills USA signing day was May 16th. Forty-two students at the moment are being offered full-time employment upon graduation. Um, we recently have a simulation of impaired drivers with go-karts thanks to the National Guard coming in. FFA in Horticulture, last week Jeremy Jackson of Abington and Lucas Salbucci of Hanover, Jackson R. of Abington, and Ryan McCrosser of Rockland took first place in the state of Mass FFA Hardscape Competition at Evercave Tech. Jeremy Jackson took first place individually, and Jackson R. took third place individually. The Horticulture Program has taken first place in all FFA career development events this year. Congratulations to all of them. Athletics, lacrosse, boys and girls will enter NIAA vocational tournaments after great, after a great season. The program celebrated four 100-goal scores this year. Baseball and softball will enter NIAA tournament. Um, charter field sends Connor Norton to States to compete in the long jump. He qualified for States at the Mayflower varsity league meet on Monday in an effort to keep involved with the NIAA. We will send two students, we sent two students, Allison and Kaylee, to Gillette Stadium on Wednesday to be celebrated as part of the Massachusetts celebration of girls and women's sports. Um, during the session, they were empowered to continue on their athletic journey as well, learning valuable skills to bring back and share with their teams. Any just has nothing to support, nothing to reward, sorry. Um, student council has had a successful volleyball tournament fundraising for ALS and WHD and Pep rally recently. We have prom tomorrow, and students have been working on set pieces as well as setting up the grand march. That's all I have for you guys today. Thank you.
Julie, great, thank you very much for your commitment this year.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sandy. Student of the month, Mr. Boyle.
It is my pleasure to introduce the May 2024 student of the month, Lily McGinn. Lily is an Allied Health senior, she's an Abington resident, and she is the daughter of proud parents Cindy and Tim McGinn. Lily has participated in the school's cooperative education program at the residence at Edmund Hill in Quincy, Mass, where she has logged almost 500 hours of on-the-job instructional training. Lily is an exceptional student. She is the president of the National Health Society, an active member of South Shore Tech's student council, and a proud recipient of the Sandy Smith Service Award for her contributions to our school and her community. Her dependability makes her an asset to all programs that she participates in. If there is a school event here on campus or off campus, it's often seen that Lily is likely there setting it up or cleaning it up at the closure of the event. As a licensed CNA, Lily stands to pursue a career in labor and delivery specializing in bid wiretapping. She has recently been accepted and will enroll at UMass Boston in the fall for the nursing program. Congratulations to Lily, and best of luck in your future endeavors.
We have a show button here? And great National Health and Parents Association, congratulations, Sandra Walker.
Thank you, the parent association, I'm just pleased to be enjoying you, please. Dear school committee, please allow me to present the dedicated members of our parent association present here tonight, who have shown exceptional commitment to South Shore Technical High School throughout this and every school year. Present tonight are Erin McEary, Karen Bergia, Cynthia Ortiz, Jessica Rinzetti, Emily Billings. It is a great pleasure that we recognize their outstanding contributions, express our gratitude for their unwavering support of all things of South Shore Tech. Their tireless efforts and dedication have made significant impact on the success of our students and well, and their well-being. This amazing team of hardworking volunteers have consistently demonstrated their commitment to fostering a positive and inclusive environment for both students and parents. Throughout the school year, South Shore Tech's P.A. has gone above and beyond as a school in numerous ways. Their contributions include endless hours of volunteer work, advocacy and positive communication about South Shore Tech, resourceless, no resourcefulness, no stone goes unturned as they find innovative solutions for challenges and collaborations with all members of our school community. Their ability to bring people together and work towards common goals has been invaluable. Their unwavering support and commitment have made significant difference in the lives of our students and the overall success of our school. I am going to turn the mic over to Erin McEary, acting parent association president, to share some highlights of their, of their year for years. But before I do so, I want to thank them for what I witnessed, their endless hours at the snack shack. Loving South Shore Tech gear to and fro, car to car, event to event, rain or shine. I want to celebrate the amazing South Shore Tech athletic chairs, which you'll have the opportunity to see at our graduation ceremony. Uh, and for the athletic, uh, yeah, and for athletic contests, and the amazing, amazing time at the outstanding collaboration event at Tingo. So, and it's also been really my pleasure to work with the South Shore Tech parent association. As, I'll just say, as a mom myself, I don't have the opportunity to work with my own P.A., given my own roles and responsibilities here, it's kind of unattainable for me. And this has really been my opportunity to work with some really outstanding women who are giving 100% to our school. So I value your contributions and the work to work moving in the future.
Thank you.
And now I'll turn it over to Erin.
Thank you.
Erin McEary, parent association president.
Yes, thank you. Uh, maybe for those shiny words, um, so again, uh, I joined the parent association slash at the time, like the athletic association six years ago, when my son was a freshman. And the reason why I joined is I heard this Dicky talk about no fees for sports or athletics, and giving every kid a, a chance to participate. And I don't know if he realizes the impact that those particular things and funding those opportunities really do have on our student body and commitment. Through the course of that, I ended up here. Right? Um, and my running joke around the school is, well, it's like Hotel California. You can check in, but you never can check out because I would be transitioning to my new de, new department and working with Tom on the, uh, the school building committee, as the parent liaison. So I just told my family, June 20, January 26th of 2025, I really hope that time. But, uh, as Sandy alluded to, this has been one of our most successful years. One of the most important things to me was bringing back an in-person community event with Cynthia Ortiz, when she came into the meeting. Um, she said, well, you know, I, I can do it. And, and we gave her free rein, and she ran with it, and we had one of our most successful fundraisers ever. So I can't thank Cynthia enough, and her husband Ralph, who has been the backbone of support and quite, quite a time partner, but he does a lot to support this effort. So this year, we have, again, some of our most successful fundraising events, um, and concession stands fails. This allows us to fund projects such as mental health awareness and suicide prevention, which was from the car show. So heading into the, this, the next school year's car show, you will see the t-shirt. This is the first edition. Each year, the graphics department will be making t-shirts. And so at junior year right now, a couple of juniors are putting together, um, what it's going to be. And then the shop teachers will decide, so we'll have the t-shirts ready to go. T-shirts brought in over $4,000 for the mental health awareness and suicide prevention program, which was one of my main things that I wanted to leave the school with, um, because it was very important, and it was a very passionate project of mine. Uh, we've got teacher appreciation, which is monthly copy of Patrice, they get it on every Wednesday. Um, and they like, as Sandy mentioned, the new sideline chairs for the gym. So you can see those for, for your volleyball or basketball at certain, certain events. Just please take any pens out of your pocket before graduation, they will erase them. But we, we were challenged with, we want something, but something that can be transitioned to a new building. We don't want to put money into something that's not going to stay. So, uh, with current Montgomery's house, we came up with the sideline chairs, and it really does transition the gym, and it really did make the kids feel special. And people now, when they come to the gym, they know they're at South Shore Tech. They know, they know our colors, they know our Viking logo. So that was very important to us. Uh, we got a, a new camera for the graphics department for the yearbook. So they didn't have a set dedicated camera for the yearbook to take pictures and everything that the graphics team does. So, um, Mr. Kelt just went out and bought a brand new camera. We donated the money for that. Um, and now we're going to have, again, a senior will have a project. And so you'll see more pictures and stuff going up on the website because we'll have that in every community event now, as opposed to somebody trying to take pictures with their camera. Uh, phone, doesn't really work. We have our awards program, which we continue every year, which again goes to, um, any student that's going on into the trade for licensing booths or whatever else they need, and for, you know, continuing on their education in a college degree. Um, again, we, there's no parameters of that. We've just put parameters around that they do have to volunteer in some of, most of the P.A. events because that's how we, um, you know, who we need to volunteer is really, we're tired. Uh, the class of 2024 events, we're bringing them back. Um, again, we sponsored the lawn signs, so each, each graduating senior gets a free lawn sign that goes out. Again, that's something that we sponsor every year. Um, and I even sent Karen a picture the other day, um, you know, 2020, I remember going around to each of the houses and trying to drop them off, so I was like, I'm like, I'm so down with the lawn signs. And the lawn sign. Uh, we water for graduation, of course, it's been hot, which hopefully won't be too hot, but no rain. Um, so we sponsored that. We have new this year, a shop board, so each shop will have a board that will have their associated color on it. Um, that was a last year request, but we were able to fundraise and, and have money for that. Uh, so we're really excited about that because that, again, moving forward, we'll set the terms for each shop to have that. Uh, with senior breakfast and senior lunch, uh, we're bringing that back again. The outgoing, uh, graduates again lost a lot to COVID in 2024. Um, and it was kind of something that we really all agreed with, we need to bring back to make sure that they feel that they're leaving the school in a, in a positive note, and not just leaving. Uh, we aim with the annual civics, uh, the annual student civics project, you know, Chalk Fest. And, um, moving away, uh, Tom and I were just talking about this, we're moving away, the Vikings Athletic Association will leave no more. Um, after I leave, it's the same people, so it will just be South Shore Tech Parents Association. But each of the sports team is getting, uh, like a startup kickstart to help fundraise so that they can go out and buy things that they need. Like, the track team needs stream beds for their, for their cleats and their sneakers and their uniforms, so that when we go in, you know, it's, we look like the other participants that, that are, that are there. And the track team, um, we just came from that, and Tom, right, like, we were just talking about that, moved up to, uh, we had the number 60 kids. So that 60 kids that didn't go home after school, they actually participated and were part of the community, so we're really excited about that. Uh, we have other smaller requests that come in from administration throughout the year that, you know, we look at and we say, all right, where are we? Do we have any funds? We also give a $500 donation to Skills USA. Again, that helps with the Skills USA program, helps them go forward. Um, so that's something that we have done. We've done upgrades to the concession stand, so if you head down to football, uh, these lovely ladies, uh, will be serving you, um, some, some new items, which, uh, we kind of launched, like launched in the spring and really kind of pick up. So again, that will continue to drive, um, additional funds. Again, everything is pickup, carry, again, nothing is, um, grounded, so that when we get the new building. Uh, but lastly, I cannot, um, stress it enough. It is not a one-man band, it is not me doing it all the time, it is all of us together. There is no titles, we don't say it, we are all equal, we all talk the same, we all express the same, we are all involved in the community, we are all selling the same story of the positive community atmosphere. Um, again, you know, we are here to represent the student body and the parents, so we can agree to disagree with administration when we can. But again, we are, we are aligned in our messaging of positivity and building the school, school community. Um, so that's it, and you will see me in your local town.
Rockland. Please.
So, um, with the exception of Bob's, but. But, um, thank you for, um, recognizing this team of amazing women, um, that can help.
Uh, treasures report, Jim?
Uh, it's not after quality, thank you, Mr. Chair. This month's report for the end of April, um, on the cover of the, um, just to look around for the summer program that's been running, uh, the summer was going to be running. Let's do this cash balances, page three is the income. The only income that came through this year, this month, again, is our chapter 70 money. Uh, plus I made the adjustment for the non-resident tuition that we collected last year, comes into revenue this year. Um, and on the page is the expenditures, um, a valid call, a column for just the proposed. We're going to go through some budget transfers in a few minutes. Um, just the proposed transfers, again, at the end of the year, a lot of spending, it's basically funded in a lot of ways that we pretty much tell everybody accountable for the budget in the first nine months, and month end comes upon us, and we have savings, we have deficits, and there's a lot of money movements and reps to accommodate what, what Superintendent Dippy and, um, the, the administration needs for moving the money around. So, um, overall, in the middle there, expended a little over a million dollars on the budget for this month. Of course, but again, it's, it'll get me year-to-date numbers. So we're, we're doing well, and, uh, everything is going smoothly, so.
I'll undertake a motion for the treasures report.
So move Whitman?
Whitman?
Second.
Second, Abington. Again, we'll go through roll call vote. Abington?
Yes.
Cohasset?
Yes.
Hanover?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Rockland, yes. Situit?
Yes.
And Whitman?
Yes.
Thank you. Budget transfers.
Um, and you happen to have a budget transfer, probably 78,500. Again, as you were well aware, the budgets put together usually in December, um, in 18 months in advance of the end of the year. So again, a lot of it is guestimates, and a lot of, um, items that, there's rate increases that we weren't aware of at the time. So overall, we're looking to increase, um, line item budgets for, for land insurance, annual contracts, um, lease graphics, equipment, total supplies, dues and licenses, software licenses, and miscellaneous transportation with 78,500. And we have savings in the unemployment line item, our annual inspection line item, transportation.
annual inspection line item, transportation, maintenance contracts and technology. There's a couple of transportation items on here. There are a couple annual contracts, especially this more line item. We missed some last what we voted for the budget. So overall, seventy five is the total budget transfer for this month.
Make a motion. Anybody else take a motion on the budget transfers?
I'll make that one.
Motion with this.
Second, Situitt.
Any questions on the transfers? Hearing them and seeing them, go to a vote. Abington.
Yes.
Cohasset.
Yes.
Anover.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Noah.
Yes.
Rockland, yes. Situitt.
Yes.
And Whitman.
Yes.
That is a vote. Give me any other updates?
Just Superintendent Dickey and I were working with the current unit numbers of all the line items to identify potential savings on various line items along with various needs as well. Identify what we're going to do over the next five weeks, six weeks, regarding through the end of June. So we have a number that we're working with. I'll have the, I got a big number in two weeks just in case any additional new expenses come through the door. But at the June meeting, we'll be presenting some sort of plan for some spending, based upon some budgeted savings. Okay.
So who can you direct it?
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Very briefly, we secured our fiscal '25 budget as a result of the town meetings that were held earlier this month. One remaining town meeting is Cohasset in the first week of June. But with six communities in the affirmative, that's what would deem our budget to be passed. I thank you for all your work in your communities and the support of our communities to fund our operating budget. I'll also mention briefly that we appreciate the work of our culinary arts department as they, for the second time this year, attended the Rotary sponsored flea market at the Marshfield Fairgrounds. That was this past Sunday, where the weather was a little cooler than it is today. And the coffee and other things they provide were very much appreciated from those in attendance. I was also at Marshfield Select Board this week to give them an update on our building project, communicate conversation about the regional agreement. I want to also mention, although Lily has left, I was with Lily and some other students this morning at the Indian Pond Country Club, where we were guests of the South Shore Chamber of Commerce. And I want to thank Peter Foreman, the executive director, who was kind enough to include us. We were able to have an opportunity to meet Governor Healy prior to the meeting. And we received several very positive shout outs during her remarks as they talked about many major policy topics, workforce development being near the top of the list. She indicated that vocational education was an excellent investment, words that I think we'd all agree with. So it was very nice to be included in that. I think the students appreciated being part of that civic event and again, appreciated Peter Foreman including us. I'll also mention that between now and the time we meet again, we're going to participate in a couple of other civic events. We will be at Whitman Day. We will have June 8th, which is also the same day as Abington. Is it Founder's Day, Tom? I think it was Founder's Day on June 8th. And Anover Day on June 22nd. Thank you, Mr. Chair. And now I'll turn it over to Sandy for administrative reports.
I have two small, two in the morning, but three items. First, since our last time together, we had a NEAS visit with ten visitors at our school for two days, taking a look at all the next components and all the coverage. And their report is generally positive. A couple of recommendations for us to consider as we move into a visit in 2026. They have not been formally received by us and as soon as they are, I will share them with you. But in general, really positive reports and a great experience overall earlier this May. The second is in your packet. I provided the 2024-25 School Improvement Plan goals and wanted to just share my gratitude for the stakeholders who were involved. Very satisfied from my perspective in the process this year. We have a small School Improvement Plan, School Council members, but the stakeholders that we engaged in the process of identifying our needs was vast through surveys and virtual opportunities to connect with us. So several of the goals are extension goals. I will not detail those, but I wanted to highlight a couple of the new goals that are aligned to both our school mission and goals, but also NEAS standards. And so specifically, I want to talk a little bit about identified goal for Super Bowl, LPOP, where I thought it was a sound decision on part of the school council to ensure that our professional development and short and long-term budget funding supports that for the population and training chart on campus starting next year. I will also note that in regards to teaching and learning and foundational elements around professional practice, that the school council wants us to focus on AI. What does that mean for teachers and students that learn that being different? And how do we manage that moving forward as educators and learners? In regard to the foundational elements of learning culture and professional practice, in regard to cultural proficiency, we will prioritize a school-wide cultural proficiency as we've done in the last few years. But the approach will be more spike-based than letting in outside professional development. We've spent a fair amount of time and district dollars fundraising professional development in that area in the last two years with outside providers. Now it's time for us to bring that in-house and share our accounts within through subcommittee and teaching and learning groups. And the last two are in regards to student mental health and the educational resources around mental health. We are supporting student mental health. The school council really wants to ensure that we provide a great balance to health and wellness courses during school day, which we are committed to, thankfully, to budget funds dedicated to a new health and wellness instructor. We will be offering out the wellness classes to our administrators and administrators during the school day next year, which are scheduled and our PE staffing would not allow previous. So we are thankful for that. And finally, we have a goal around educator mental health. We will work in a subcommittee to identify the prior concerns of our educators and address them, we hope effectively and certainly immediately when they are identified. So a solid plan, regular work of the school council. It has been approved, you know, so this is in just a goal form. When it's completed, I will certainly share the final school improvement plan with you and we'll put it on our school website sometime this summer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Questions?
Okay. Now, I'd like to take time, review in your package, take it back to April fours. I'd like to make it a moment to accept the book for the second reading of the policies listed in the attachment. Anover, second by Whitman. Any discussion on this matter?
Mr. Chair, I'm going to continue to thank the policy subcommittee for their work. This is the second installment of policy revisions. We'll have a third installment before the end of the summer. Thank you.
Great. And anybody else have any, say any book calls? Okay, with that being said, we have a motion and a second. We have a vote right now. Abington.
Yes.
Cohasset.
Cohasset, yes.
Anover.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Noah.
Yes.
Rockland, yes. Situitt.
Yes.
Ian Whitman.
Yes.
Yes, great. New business. Okay. Multi-confirmed anticipated MSBA project election on January 25th, 2025.
So move Situitt.
Motion Situitt. Second here, Anover. Any discussion on that?
Mr. Chair, just to point out that while this date was a agreed upon consensus of the town clerks from all of our communities, this was a formality from the school committee putting it on the record.
Again, big day, January 25th. With that being said, any discussion on this election day? I'll take the roll call vote. Abington.
Yes.
Cohasset.
Yes.
Anover.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Noah.
Yes.
Rockland, yes. Situitt.
Yes.
Ian Whitman.
Yes.
Great. Thank you very much. We're forward to that busy day. A pool for out-of-state field trips, donations and surplus. Horticulture. Finals of America, which are finals in America between Indianapolis, Indiana, October 22nd into the 25th in 2024. Skills USA National Competition Atlanta, Georgia, June 24th to the 28th. And the October Adventure Club, like the one I'm laughing that forks being, June 13th, 2024. Computer Information Technology, the Linglin Institute of Technology, East Bend, Indiana, May 23rd. Donation, except tools from the Abington resident for automotive program, surplus, opening carpentry, power, and later. Anybody have any questions on any of those? I'm going to wait. Hearing them and seeing them, now let the team in motion. To move.
So move Situitt.
Motion Whitman, second Situitt. Any discussion? Didn't hear anything. So we'll do a roll call vote again. Abington, yes. Cohasset.
Yes.
Anover.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Noah.
Yes.
Rockland, yes. Situitt.
Yes.
Ian Whitman.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, very good. We have any requests for action? Okay, I'll continue the agenda for the school building committee. The first on our agenda is to approve the minutes from the April 25th, 2024 School Building Committee meeting. So move Whitman, second. Abington. I'll take a roll call. Wathaywood, yes. Tom Hippie.
Yes.
Sandy Baldwin.
Yes.
George Cooney.
Yes.
Jim Cofflin.
Yes.
Bob Mahoney, yes. Jack Manning.
Yes.
Bob Melo, yes. Robert Muller Jr.
Francis Muller Jr., yeah.
Frank, that was you, I'm sorry. I apologize. Tom Petrosolli, yes. Dustin Ritten.
Yes.
Dan Salvucci.
Yes.
Keith Boye.
Yes.
Oh, happy. I was waiting for you. Oh, boy. Okay, at this point, for any voices, I'll turn it over to Kevin.
So the first item is actually going to be, actually, we can go to the next slide. I'll start with the first six agenda. So we have two invoices for services rendered in German, on the Aprils, including $29,000 for Leftfield, again, for services during the April, and $100,000 for DRA Architects, also German, on the April. But $119,000.
Our second. Yeah. I'll make a motion to accept Leftfield's. Second. Second by Abington. Motion made by Rockland, second by Abington. I'll call the roll. Wathaywood, yes. Tom Hippie.
Yes.
Sandy Baldwin.
Yes.
George Cooney.
Yes.
Jim Cofflin.
Yes.
Bob Mahoney.
Yes.
Jack Manning.
Yes.
Bob Melo.
Yes.
Frank Muller Jr. Tom Petrosolli. Dustin Ritten.
Yes.
Dan Salvucci.
Yes.
And Keith Boye.
Yes.
Approved contract amendments.
Yep.
Your honor.
So this is a recommendation to approve designer amendment number five for DRA for total $67,540, which includes $26,840 for traffic impact study analysis and $40,700 for geotechnical services, both very much needed for the MSBA's in that example.
Any questions on the amendments?
Yeah, this is really all I can. Yes. I'll get into a little more detail on the next slide. Okay.
I'll take a motion to approve the amendment.
So move Situitt.
We got Melo and Situitt. Roll call, Wathaywood, yes. Tom Hippie, yes. Sandy Baldwin.
Yes.
George Cooney.
Yes.
Jim Cofflin.
Yes.
Bob Mahoney.
Yes.
Jack Manning.
Yes.
Rockland Melo.
Yes.
Frank Muller Jr.
Yes.
Tom Petrosolli, yes. Dustin Ritten.
Yes.
Dan Salvucci, yes. And Keith Boye.
Yes.
Designer update, Carl.
So what are the budgets first?
New budget.
Just a really quick budget update. As you can see, we have committed 79% of this budget and expended 52% of it. I'm just going to step a little closer to my eyes. So including the most recent amendment that we just approved, we have uncommitted funds of $410,228. And we are currently anticipating roughly $200,000 worth of extra services and additional testing that may happen, which will leave us approximately $210,228 in remaining funds. So we are confident that staying in budget, we will continue to do so. But certainly, have any answer, any questions?
Mr. Chair, when we see these amendments that Leftfield presents, they are moving, and Kevin, you can just clap for this. When we occasionally see these amendments, the environmental and sightline where we already budgeted $300,000, that, for instance, is where we're drawing funds from to cover the two, the traffic and the geotech that were presented on, I believe, that was presented earlier. So all things considered, we're trending to probably have $210,000 unspent by the time we reach the industry's ability.
Yep. But yeah, this budget's comprised of multiple buckets and a couple of votes included. This is the first time that the environmental incentive bucket is actually being tapped in. So we're going to be very mindful of that.
Any questions, Kevin? Okay, that was a budget amendment. So now we go to Carl.
There's an MSBA update there first.
I'll do that really quick. Sorry. Just really good, the MSBA update. The MSBA approved this project to proceed into schematic design at the April 24th, 2024 board meeting.[1675.64] In terms of next steps, we're currently targeting the October Board of Directors meeting, which requires that we submit schematic design report to the MSBA by August twenty-ninth, and a schematic design budget to the MSBA by mid-August, so that's what we're working towards.
Okay. And, sorry, Mr. Chair, sorry, Cal, could I may just, could you go, Crystal, would you might just, thank you. Uh, so just to point out to building committee and school committee members, in light of those, uh, deadlines in August, it means that our need to, uh, communicate as a group, which historically in August has been quiet, probably not this summer, in order for us to, we have to meet the mid-August deadline to then give the project team time to meet the second August, that second August deadline. So as we prepare for our June meetings and July and August, we'll just need to budget in, uh, enough time around people's summer schedules to make sure the committee has time to give feedback on schematic design updates. And the last part of the slide that Kevin referenced, just to reiterate, the MSBA has confirmed that when they do set reimbursement rates, they do take into account where the kids are coming from, is not simply nine towns. So that, that was a very important question we had asked months ago, and, uh, I appreciate the team's work in getting that answered. Thank you. Thank you, Cal.
Okay. So, um, despite the fact that it looks like October is a long way away, but we need to submit, you know, the next Board of Director meeting of the MSBA, um, we're backing up quite a few steps here, uh, in order to, um, uh, prepare all the information that goes into that submittal. Uh, the next major milestone for us, uh, is to get information to the cost estimators and to our new team of, of construction managers to do cost estimating, basically in the month of July, so that we can present numbers to you early in August. Those are the numbers that, um, Mr. Q is referring to in terms of the, the budget. Uh, and then ultimately, we can package the whole submittal together in August to be, um, reviewed by the MSBA in advance of their, uh, October board meeting. So some of the activities that we've been involved in since, uh, uh, not just the end of April's, uh, board meeting, but actually going back a little bit, uh, in, in terms of schematic design are fine-tuning the, the layouts, we're working with, uh, the administration, we're working with instructors, and so forth, and I'll share the plans with you in a moment. We, at our recent working group, discussed the mechanical electrical plumbing systems, that's M E P for short there, um, to confirm, uh, uh, what the, the proposed systems will be in, in the new building. And we'll be still, uh, sort of testing and reviewing those, uh, to fine-tune them, but we've made kind of high-level decisions about into those systems. Uh, as I mentioned, programming interviews, us talking again with the staff, we've, we've got layouts, I'll, I'll share with you in a moment, and, and then share the plans too, and then we wanna talk about how we're managing the scope as we go forward, so we can have the next slide, Crystal, thanks. So the, one of the, the big things with the M E P systems that we should, we should highlight is that, um, this project, um, will be complying with the new, very stringent energy code, um, and sort of going above and beyond too, so that not only will it, you know, produce an, an energy-efficient building with low operating costs going forward for the district, which is great, but also initially, um, it will allow the district to receive four additional reimbursement points from the MSBA. And so, just, you know, rough numbers, if you have a, you know, a two-hundred-million-dollar construction cost, four percent is eight million dollars, that would increase the MSBA grant by eight million dollars. And we don't believe it'll take eight million dollars in construction improvements to achieve that, so it's definitely a, a good payback. Um, but in addition to that too, um, with the, the anticipated system, um, there are significant utility company rebates available, because both the federal government and the local utility companies are really incentivizing projects like this to, to look at, uh, energy-efficient systems, um, and, and so forth. So, um, that's not even factored in, uh, to the, uh, equation yet. We, we had a conversation just this past week with, uh, MassSafe and, and working with National Grid, to understand and make sure that we can comply and maximize the rebates that you can get, uh, with this. But basically, just to let you know, it will be an all-electric building, um, in other words, for the heating and cooling side of, of things. Um, so there won't be, uh, uh, you know, oil heat or gas fire heat except in, as backup or as emergency generators, it might be diesel fuel for the emergency generator. So there's, we can't say there's no fossil fuels basically in the building, but very limited use of fossil fuels, um, on-site. Obviously, the way electric's generated, that's off-site, um, but, uh, the, the, the long-term goal is that it will be a very efficient electric grid and so forth. Uh, the, the other initials there, in terms of the, uh, heating and ventilating, air conditioning system is a variable refrigerant flow system, V R F system. Fairly common system now going into projects like this. It's, it's kind of the, the commercial version of maybe what some of you have in your house now with split systems, where you have a condenser outside and have a unit inside, and the connection between the two is basically a refrigerant line. Um, that's the, the basic system here. So running through the building, we're not gonna be running hot water or chilled water in pipes, we'll be running refrigerant, um, to the various units. Um, it's a very efficient system, it's very, uh, a flexible system, and, and it's easily, uh, controlled, you know, classroom by classroom, or even office suite by office suite, um, in terms of controls too. So we have the session on that. We'll continue to, to fine-tune it, as we say, going forward, and we'll let you know, you know, at each time, and a working group will be discussing this, if you're interested in joining, understanding, and, and participating in that. So, before we move on, any questions on, on those systems?
Yes. I have a question. If we go all-electric there, and we try to vote, if it'll be supported with that, it would be still be able to have any kind of energy to put some solar panels on the roof to help with that, between the all-electric?
That, that's one of the reasons they incentivize all-electric, is because you can reduce the demand, you know, the electricity you're drawing from the grid, if you put solar panels on your roof or on carports, or, you know, either initially or in the future. So that's one reason that, that they are incentivizing, uh, projects to go all-electric, is because it makes it more, even more compatible for solar panels. So we still need to decide, um, you know, how and to what extent, uh, the building will have, uh, solar panels. We're certainly making the entire building solar-ready, uh, as a minimum, but, um, there, there are various ways, you know, the district might do a power purchase, what's a power purchase agreement, um, where you don't actually own the panels, but you get a discount on your electric rates, uh, by having a third party put the panels on the roof. Um, so there's still, uh, a few options that we'll go through, um, with the district. We don't have to decide this yet at this phase, on, on how we'll do it, but, uh, we're certainly planning for it.
I have a question. We still like expanding expectancy of solar panels.
I don't know, these days, uh, another project, we're replacing some that are, uh, less than fifteen years old vehicles, the, uh, rather than relocate them, the, the consultant said that the, the new ones are more efficient, so it's better to, to upgrade them in that sense. I believe most of, uh, uh, new panels that you buy today, they probably say that they're, they're good for at least twenty years, twenty-five years, um, which sort of ties in with the same life expectancy of the membrane roof underneath it, so that makes it sort of convenient that you can replace the roof the same time you replace the panels in the future. Uh, but they do have slightly diminishing return or efficiency, solar panels, I, I think that's improving, but, you know, the day that you plug them in the first time, they're, say, a hundred percent efficient, they lose a little bit just through degradation or maybe dirt or cleaning or, you know, something that affects their efficiency down to ninety-six or something later in life.
Now, the new, the new cell panels, are they still considered hazardous works?
Uh, we've heard that, I, I don't believe so, uh, anymore in terms of, um, uh, disposing of that, when the time comes, twenty years from now?
Okay.
Yeah.
Just wanna add to your expenses.
Sure. Yeah, that's a good point. We can move on. Thanks. So again, just to, um, share with you a sample of, um, you know, some of the programming inputs and the, and the level that the plans are at these days, these are plans, um, of the shops showing the equipment and furniture that goes into the shop. These are the kinds of, of documents we were using in our discussions with each instructor that gave us input, we're now gonna rearrange things a little bit, um, and, and update the layouts, but also produce a list of equipment too, so that as part of this phase, we can figure out how much of that equipment is existing to be moved into the new building that you already own, and how much has to be bought in so that we can fine-tune the budget as, as part of this. Um, but just some basic highlights we wanted to point out to you, i- in the new school and the proposed school, every, every shop will have a related room. Now, a related room, um, most of the time, as you can see in this example, um, will have adjacency both to the corridor so that students on the off weeks can enter directly in without going through the shop, but when the room's not being used to teach related in the academic week, the, the shop can be accessed, I mean, the related room can be accessed from the shop side as well, so it makes it very flexible. That's generally being applied in all shops. Every shop will have its own unisex toilet room for students, uh, they don't have to leave the shop, um, to access the bathroom. Um, there, there will be lockers provided in every shop, um, for students. There's a question as to how many, um, student lockers we need in addition to that, if any, in the hallways. Um, if every student has a locker in a shop, there's always that issue, the first year, the freshmen are here and they're not in a shop yet, where do they go for a locker? I mean, they could be assigned one in just the random shop, 'cause there will be enough, we, we might provide a few in the hallways, we're still working on that, but. And then there's also kind of this issue always, kind of parity or, or, of, of what accommodations do the instructors get in their shop? Is it an actual office with walls and doors and glass, or a workstation kind of on the floor? For the most part, it seems like the workstation on the floor is, is both, uh, preferred and, and acceptable to, to, uh, the instructors, uh, where they can keep an eye on things but still have kind of a private area, so to speak, for, you know, for their home base and provide good supervision of the students, uh, in there too. So that, those are some of the common, uh, elements in all shops. In the high bay shops, everyone will have an overhead door for deliveries and, and both materials and equipment. Every shop in the high bays will have a mezzanine over those areas on the shop here to the right there, where the related room is the storage area or where the, the toilet room and storage room are, there'll be a mezzanine, um, built over that for the mechanical equipment that ventilates that shop, because, uh, the rest of the shop will be high bay, like twenty feet high, but in those areas, we're basically cutting it in half, again, just to be more efficient, we can locate the equipment right there, uh, and still have adequate headroom in, in the classroom below it. So that, that's typically how it's done. To deal with any noise or fumes or things from these shops, uh, not only is there good ventilation, but at the entrance, you see there's sort of two doors you have to go through, a vestibule, that's to control sound too, because oftentimes, right across the hallway, maybe a classroom or, or an office, um, and, um, some people don't believe it at all, it's gonna be noisy in that shop, I can't, you know, work there, but, um, we found it actually can be done, um, and, and having a single door, a single vestibule there, um, adjacent to the corridor helps with that, controlling the environmental sound impacts from any, any shop. So just to let you know, that's all being developed right now, incorporated into plans. Thanks. So i- in terms of plans, again, no major changes, uh, really to highlight, um, uh, one minor, one of the fitness weight rooms on the end of the building there, we've kind of put them together and moved the stair around a little bit, but that's a minor point. We still have the exit out of the locker rooms directly, you know, out of the building there to the athletic fields. And otherwise, the, the, the areas that are labeled admin are one area that we're, we're fine-tuning right now as to who goes where, what, what, you know, offices that are, are located, uh, so that, that's still, um, being worked on. But otherwise, you can see all the furniture equipment that's sort of populating the planes now, as we said, those are the, the pieces that, that we're fine-tuning and, and hope to have, um, resolved. We wanna meet with the shop inspectors before the end of the school year again, just so they have enough checks to kind of okay the, the, uh, update to their, to their shops. So if we can go to, uh, Crystal, second floor likewise. We're looking at, um, on the second floor, the area labeled libraries, student commons is an area that, um, again, just today, the working group, we were talking about, you know, what does that really wanna be in vocational school, how can we make it more efficient and more utilized and, and so forth, so that, that's one area, but otherwise, the, the general layout, um, of shops, and again, remember that, uh, on the upper floor here, three low bay shops, graphics, C I T and allied health, they're on the second floor level here. And the one change since you've seen these plans last, at the, uh, right-hand end of the east end of the, this level, used to be the district administration. At, at one time, we were considering the superintendent and business office to be located in the new building. The decision's been made that we wanna retain the use of this building that we're sitting in right now, and so we can make the, this new building a bit smaller, a bit more economical, um, and don't need to provide that space in, in the new school. So that's really about the only change in the layout there, and going up to the third floor, um, again, remember the electric shop is up there, we're working with them, there's an elevator directly adjacent to the electric shop, by the way, we're making sure that things are convenient for them to get materials and supplies from, you know, the loading area on the ground floor up to their shop, directly into their shop. Uh, so it might actually be an elevator with two doors, so you can load in and just load right out, you don't have to turn, if you got things loaded out of Dolly or, or something like that, to make it convenient for them. And you can see, again, there's some administrative areas up here, we're fine-tuning exactly what goes into those areas too. Also, I'm sorry, just go back, see, to reflect, see on the, the roof areas below, by the way, there, you, you can see we're drawing in some solar panels on these plans. Again, we don't own them, we may not actually quote-unquote own them as part of this schematic design cost estimate, but we're making provision for it, uh, in, in our thinking. So you can see it's pretty expensive, the amount of area, um, that, that is available for them. Okay, thanks. Now, the site plan two i- is, uh, being developed, um, again, basically very similar, um, not, not many significant changes to share with you, th- there are some things we still need to, to work out, but the basic drop, uh, you know, circulation flow, the number of athletic fields and, and so forth, the entrances into the building and, and service areas around the building, um, remain the same. We are, uh, trying to fine-tune exactly the parking and bus parking and, uh, and so forth. We're working on those areas by the front door and by the, the, uh, the student commons cafeteria area, which has some nice outdoor areas adjacent to both the front door and, and, and back, you might say, there, right in the center of the building. And again, the idea with these areas is to make them not just nicely landscaped, but that actually make them useful, to incorporate them into the school, where, um, classes could go out there, students might go out there in a supervised way, the plant sale like goes on by Horticulture, that's a place to, to set up at the front door, culinary yards could utilize that plaza a little bit for some outdoor dining perhaps, it's right adjacent to their restaurant, things like that. So we wanna try, like, things within the building, things outside the building, we wanna get as much multipurpose, you know, use out of those spaces, those investments, you might say. So that's sort of the, the design updates. Just wanted to highlight the next slide, um, what we might call scope management, right? We wanna, you know, it's a way of controlling the budget, we need to control the scope of the project, and we wanna confirm, you know, a few things and share with you, you, you know, where we are. The, the overall size of the building has been reduced somewhat, uh, which is a good thing from a cost point of view again, and it's not just due to the, to the removal of the district, uh, administration offices, but also just the tightening up of some dimensions and corridors and wall thicknesses and things like that. Some small, I know, but two percent of two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand is five thousand square feet. It, it's a lot, you know? Uh, and likewise, that, that's the outside of the building, the, the sort of gross square footage as we refer to. So we've also improved the net-to-gross ratio, in other words, we're still, you know, the envelope of the building is getting smaller, we still maintain the amount of usable space, the net space within the walls, by, again, tightening up some of those corridors and looking a little more carefully at wall thicknesses to the tune of about two percent. So the, the MSBA allows projects like this to have a net-to-gross ratio markup of multiplier one-point-five-zero, one-point, so if you have, you know, an office that's, that's a hundred square feet, you, you gross it up to a hundred and fifty in, in the overall building, to a lot of the corridors and stairs and wall thicknesses and all those related things. We've got that ratio down to more like one-point-four-seven or four-eight, um, one-point-five-zero, so that's the two percent reduction. We're also looking at, you know, what can the students, what can the school contribute, um, with the building? We're trying to be smart about it, again, you, I mean, schools already demonstrated you can build certain buildings for yourselves, um, and we wanna continue that, it's great learning, um, the, you know, potential as well as reducing the cost too. So we're thinking about things like the storage or maintenance garage that might be behind the building, or the, uh, concession building that might be by the football field and so forth. And even inside the building, um, we're, we're, you know, wondering and, and will be, uh, looking for opportunities like display cases, built-in benches, things, again, that we might subtract from the work that the construction manager does and subcontractors on the job, and have the students do some of that. And then, like we mentioned, we're, we're carefully, you know, trying to understand how much of the, the equipment and furniture has to be new, how it can be reused, and take, again, good decisions. We don't, you know, uh, wanna bring over things that are on its last legs, or things that end up, you know, mismatched or something, in one classroom, and have three different kinds of chairs or something like that. Uh, so we do wanna be smart about it, but there's certainly value in some of the equipment that you recently bought, and, and going forward too, of course, you, you wanna be smart, I think. I think someone mentioned it today about things, I guess it was the parents group, about buying things that might be able, moved into the building as opposed to things that, you know, for whatever reason are fixed in the old building and can't be brought over. So, again, always to sort of keep a handle on the scope and and the mother. So just wanted to include those. So with that, we've got a lot of guests here that want to talk too. I'll get out of the way if you all have some right here.
Well, now we're recognizing the representative. Still growing in the spotlight. First of all, we'd like to thank you very much for overjoining, being selected, and to make sure that you get the value of us in here, anticipating. Not everybody on our team is able to be here today, but I think we've got a core team of individuals. I think in the presentation, we told you how our team is coming from the Diamond School. The timing would be perfect once it's done, we're coming into yours. That's after we get through the major hurdle of getting the votes and seats. And Erin Rafferty, I wish she was here, she can kind of tell you a little bit more specifics on what she's done in the past and how we've helped multiple communities get to the vote. So with that, I'm Christian Hayden, Senior Vice President for Suffolk. I lead the 149A K-12 sector for the company, so that's all I do at post schools. I do four-year-olds to complete, over a dozen K-12 project delivery in 149A. We have a great team here that's been working together for six years doing tech schools. So I think that's to get a great team that lets you choose yourselves.
Hi, my name is Turgutisa, I'll be the vice president. Like Christian, I've also just worked on large 149A schools, so really excited to be part of that.
I'm Thompson, I'm with Suffolk, thirty-seven years, so bring a host of experience to the project. As she said, I'm a graduate, yeah.
I'm David Slomsky, I'm a cost pack, so I run the construction department. So all our 149A jobs and school jobs over the last twenty years, I've been part of several. What would your cost area care be on this and get you to where you need to be?
I'm Jonathan Sawyer, I'm a builder, I've been in Suffolk twenty-one years. I touch all of our K-12 projects and I provide logistical and planning expertise to the job and and help support the type of projects.
Hello, my name's Angie Carter, I'm superintendent, I've been with Suffolk for six, almost seven years. I've been at Derby High School, I've been at Diamond High School, I also work at Gillette Stadium. So getting used to working on active campuses and knowing what it means for a day-to-day operation and and exactly what goes into that.
Yeah, so like Christian mentioned, there are school builders, right? And really, the the value that we see here is just how much expertise we have on very similar projects. The core of the team, Andrew, Jonathan, Erin, they've all worked on large 149A voc tech schools. So we are living and breathing that right now, so we're going to be able to bring those kind of experiences during recon and then obviously during reconstruction. So, yeah, we're just very excited to be able to keep that that train rolling.
So listen to video of our presentation, logistically how the project looked in the background we were living in, in Suffolk. Obviously, we'll be doing reconstruction.
I'll just kind of guide it, and then Jonathan and Ryan will come in. So, I mean, the decision, a lot of back and forth, as some of you know, some of you are from the initial interview. What did we know? We knew that the buses and the day-to-day entry was on this side. The flow was generally through the middle and through the back. Parking buses in the backyard loaded and go around. So how do we limit our exposure and how do we limit our introduction to day-to-day activities of the school? So, this is the summer of twenty twenty-six. We first, our first time being on site is in June of twenty twenty-six. What we're doing here is setting up the fence line, adding fifty-two parking spaces in the front, extending the parking on the north side of the building, adding a total of about eighty spaces. So we go from three hundred and nineteen to about four hundred and seventeen spots before construction even starts. So opening the parking situation before we even get to the site. And then our entry is on the north side of the site.
We we like, we like this side, we like it's away from the neighbors. We like that it's clean, we like it's away from your your dining facility. And, you know, where you're entering and we're entering, it's different. Just for us, it's clean and it makes the most sense. Safe.
So clear delineation, we have a jersey barrier with fence out with spring, very clean lines, very clean entryways, we're in and out. So this is just going through what our site looks like. We have, I know, a road control is something that is very important too. You see, we see the stakes out on the site, so establishing that early on and making sure that's set up. We have our building flying from the sky. New little feature that we Suffolk has included.
So we were thinking of the building in blocks and just even learning today about some of the AC systems. That that resonates with me, knowing that we have the VRS. That means that we probably won't have a lot of piping running horizontal through the building. So the building probably can be built in blocks as a lot of the AC systems will come overhead. So that makes a lot of sense to us. Of course, as the building kind of tells us how to build it, but this is how we envision the build going in three blocks that are probably separated by expansion joints that really starts to set the range of building from the building perspective.
But from that first summer, we get our fence line established and going into that first fall of twenty twenty-six. We don't move the fence line at all for two years. So there's an entire two-year period where everything's operating the same way, buses, parking, brass nights and everything operating the same way, deliveries. So that's one of the big pros of this approach. So as we get into the end of that period, the few key things that we do. So this is the, like, May of twenty twenty-eight. We're starting to demolish these buildings in the middle, we shift our fence line a little bit, which will help us prep the landscaping area and drylands in the front, which was touched on earlier before we did this. Anyways, also during that time, that May-June time, twenty twenty-eight, we're shifting our lay-down yard, which is, the fence was like this, and now we're shifting that to additional parking spaces, eighty-five parking spaces for when the school turns over for the demo park.
And so now we're in the demo.
This is like August, right?
So, you know, this is where we really got to think through and we covered it over the parking. Because your parking is here where there's a building right now, but you, there's a time where you're going to need to vacate to move in. So so what we did, as we said, we have parking over here, and you can get out of the building in July. It's not, it's it's just a month or six weeks isn't enough time to knock down a building and then build a parking lot. So what we're saying is, if you can get out of the building fast enough, we can at least knock the building down and quickly add parking spaces to give you one concise place to to have all your vehicles for the opening of the school year. And and you have a spot where we can continue the demolition and then build your lot A, which would be in kind of like one failed swoop, one piece, not all chopped up, not a little piece and then add a piece. And then your parking area is delivered to you, and then you can kind of have all your assignments in one time, right? From a from an administrative standpoint, it'll move from here into the parking area, then it'll start to come clean for you. Well, the the athletic fields, when we change out that, but your football field will be well on your way at that point. So we'll be able to build through that at the same time. And as, here we go.
So we turn this lot over after and then we focus on the fields, and you guys are using your main dryland and your main.
Yeah, you got your EVs, you can have all your parking spots, your whole flow at this point is exactly as it was designed to be. And then we would have, you know, maybe like thirty or thirty-five people on site. You know, smaller portions of manpower basically executing on the fields. But while your traffic flows are there, football fields should be delivered, you know, by that fall. And then the 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 fields themselves would come in spring, twenty twenty-nine. Ta-da!
So I think there's a point that I'd like to make right now is that we did this in the fashion where, as you're involved in in the schematic estimate and the pre-construction, we can refine this so when it comes time to get the message out to the communities. We can run this to help deliver the messaging outside of all the flyers and all the other, you know, advertising we'll be doing along with the site.
And our our plan is driven around, you know, it's not a cliche, but trying to make, trying to, for us to do our job, give you the best experience, right? So if things change or there's things that we weren't aware of and, you know, some things have to change or this, some of this plan doesn't make sense, then during reconstruction, that's where we start to partner and we focus and we will pick the best approach. This this is how we would present it to you with, you know.
So that's who we are now.
Question is, we have a field right now has lights pending, things like that. And I don't, is it going to be like, are we going to be able to use the same lights and transfer them over? Or is it going to be another purchase of new lights?
So there's probably must go away, right?
Yeah, I mean, sometimes some communities depending on the the age of the actual fixtures, those are an element that might be able to get saved, but typically, like, the the foundations and the poles themselves, it's more costly fixing to.
We just went through this exercise at Diamond District, we really wanted to save our lives. No matter how the architect and the team tried to figure out how to do it, it just, it just was, it just never made sense.
And you know, a lot of it's, you know, the same exact quantities and how you mismatched lights, so. But we'll look at it.
Certainly, some will study it for reconstruction.
But for for our perspective, it's, we do what you want.
Dave, numbers guy, I love you. So we've been working with left field and VRA so far on all the cost estimates to a point in time that Dave steps in. And what's a transition from left field and VRA's numbers to your numbers, and how do we, at what point do we get there?
So so it's gonna be, you guys said, I'm going to be able to make every detailed estimate on it. And then DRA will probably keep, so you had a lot of, Dave estimate, we will do an estimate, they'll do an estimate, then we'll come together, because you have two people doing it, what's called reconciliation. And we go through, because everybody's not perfect. And also estimating schematics is a little bit more like a art. What we're doing, people don't like to hear this, we are guessing what the subcontractors are going to value the job at a future date on a future set of drawings. But the way we do that is we do a lot of quantification and we put unit prices to that. And we do a lot of this, so we know how it typically works out. Especially schools are a little easier than some other things, because a lot of them are very similar. We do a lot of, so we have a lot of good cost cost estimate. I've already looked through their estimate and and actually in our presentation, I talked about why I think actually your budget is actually pretty good shape. When compared to a lot of comps and I went through the details and I did some of my own take off for what we had, but obviously, we went to a pretty limited at that point. But look at at certain things, there were certain things I thought they had too high, like the steel, where I think they actually made an error, pretty simple one, but I can see that they made an error. And the mechanicals where they were too low, because this new whole electrification, they were using comps that were too low. But I think overall, I think, and I said this, I think the budget will come in at or below where where they had predicted. The other thing we're seeing is, you know, we've had this unbelievable escalation over the last, you know, since COVID. And we're starting to see that level off, especially for trades like steel and the skin of the building and the earthwork. Those trades are starting to get a lot more aggressive, mechanical, electrical trades are still not, but but a lot of those trades are. So I think I think you guys are really good shape. And I'll tell you, two years ago, we were finding these presentations and saying, well, you're just too low. So it's finally, some of it is the cost estimate firms that do the survey stuff that kind of caught up. And the others that's a little off of there. Just to add to that, we're actually doing three estimates. It's going to, it's such a crucial point in the unscheduled process, if that's where they set your budget and how much money they're going to give you. So left field, VRA, and Suffolk are going to be doing a massive cost estimate for reconciliation in July. And I think we'll all feel better about what this number looks like. The movie, it's correct, the more people looking at it, they say, oh, the, oh, no, no, we'll look at that too, and what about this? And, right, and so it it is good. Those guys don't necessarily have real day-to-day numbers. They look at more comps where we have both, we had the, we're talking subcontractors all the time, we're doing the actual work. So the combination is really nice, because you see it from different perspectives. So I mean, it works well.
I got calling at a town meeting by a lady, a night pregnancy lady. Right over there. Right there. She's very concerned about lighting and pass coming out, turning lights into our house. And I tried to tell her that I believe the driveway, exit driveway and entrance, and everything looks like that. It's more down this way.
Right.
So I just, that was the only concern. How many people from the town meeting?
Is those types of concerns, that could actually help us nail down what this is just a spare will be? Yeah, but we'll listen to those and take into consideration.
Yeah. I'm looking to be a part of it. You know, all in all, my town, handover, quiet, but we're like, respond so far. Can I run along the hill away to the patio? Don't wish throwing things out as she got to me.
We'll be fencing along the one twenty-three. During construction, so it depends on, I mean, after the football field's done and the track.
We are, we just had to look at, I said, what kind of fence and then how many, so, yes, how many minutes along the track.
Well, like you just said, one of one of the things that the the Suffolk team has talked about is they they put this presentation together based on their own research, based on the information that's available. But one of the early conversation points we'll have through schematic design is they have itemized where they have their layout area and what like this. The adjacent space we have over by Main Street, we as a building committee need to decide whether or not that little space is in play or not. We have to take a closer look at the environmental limitations. But that's why bringing them on earlier will allow us to target, to have those conversations and make sound decisions before we put a a complete package in 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 August. And so, you know, they're ready to get the ground running as we rate, as we would want.
As a comment, they should just, we should just use it, you know.
And I think during our, yeah, and and in our RFP, we did see that ninety-nine spot. So in in an effort to try and make sure that our fence line and the impact to the campus was as minimal as possible, we would like to use that as a contractor party and then just a walking path through the, who that is there.
My thing that we did mention in our presentation, we have a secret that we are committed to involve in your student audience and to build this into a living classroom. And it would be amazing for them to, not to say they don't have that experience, but it's where they live every year. So we're committed to that. I agree. Very good. Anybody else, anything else?
Yes, just as the building manager, it was satisfying to see your informed vision planning. Help me articulate to our school community when the vote passes what the transition phase will look like. And I recognize that this is the ideal and there'll be moments of imperfection, but you know, use your snippets to explain to parents, students, where your car will be, yes or no spot, all of those things are easy to find.
Or you can have the traffic patterns change between your fence.
Between pages, right?
The thought process is always separation. Trying to keep us separate and far apart from the from the group, how the students have happened.
Anything else, anyone?
Thank you, I can't think of enough. Thank you, very sorry.
Okay, with that, I'll understand abortion to adjourn the school building committee meeting. So we're having a head and weapons. Call roll, block eight with yes. Arm Hickey, yes. Sandy Baldwin.
Yes.
George Cooney.
Yes.
Hey, Kim Coughlin.
Yes.
Bob Mahoney.
Yes.
Jack Manning. Jack Manning.
Yes.
Bob Miller.
Yes.
Frank Mola.
Yes.
Tom Petterfeller.
Yes.
Dustin Riddick.
Yes.
Dan Chalhoub.
Yes.
And Pete Boyd.
Yes.
School building committee is adjourned. Very good, you guys. Continuing with the school committee, I'll entertain a motion to step into executive session to discuss electric biogaming tragedies. So we have a motion to retain this executive session. Motion, hand over. Any discussion?
Pitch with.
Those in favor have taken a roll call vote. Abbotton.
Yes.
Cohasset.
Yes.
Yonar, yes.
Anton.
Yes.
Noel, yes.
Rockland, yes.
Situate.
Yes.
Ian Whitman.
Yes.
After we've done the executive session, I'll give the votes to the president. We're now going to vote for Dr. Higgins.
Thanks, Sheriff. You indulge for just a minute before we do the cost recorder. Tom is going to be accusing himself of deliberations because he has a family member in the department.
Thank you, Tom.
Hold that motion to adjourn.
Just take this as a vote. We're now recording. Okay, we're back in open session here. And right now, I'll entertain a vote to, on the MOAs for Unit A and Unit B contracts. Yes, you have Unit A. But then you don't go on Day 1. I'll chug it up the second minute. Okay, any discussion on that?
Would you mind giving those votes up just for the record?
So once we have a motion to second, we repeat this positive things here. The COLA is 8.75% to 9% over three years for the teachers. Teachers will take going to traditional classes on their course loads in 2025. Teachers will have weekly after-school office hours for students. It may be adjustments to the grievance procedure and evaluation documents. That was a positive thing for the Unit A. So with that being said, we have a motion in a second and I'll ask for a roll call vote, which will be Abbotton's excused. Cohasset.
Yes.
Anover, yes. Anton.
Yes.
Noel.
Yes.
Rockland, yes. Situate.
Yes.
Ian Whitman.
Yes.
Great. That's Unit A. Okay, now I'll entertain a motion to Unit B. Motion, our second, second Whitman. Okay, any discussion? Okay, with that being said, before we go for the vote, COLA is eight, in three quarters over three years, 8%, sorry, 8% over three years for non-bus drivers and 9% over three years for bus drivers. Okay? Straight line, custodial, overtime, it's also the three, different protocols, driving protocols for the bus drivers. And adjusted paid time off for new hires. Okay? Again, that is all a motion in second and I'll just have to go for a roll call vote. Abbotton's excused. Cohasset.
Cohasset, yes.
Anover, yes. Anton.
Yes.
Noel, yes. Rockland, yes. Situate.
Yes.
Ian Whitman.
Yes.
Great. Mr. Sheriff, I manage also would like to thank Situate Town Administrator Jim Boudreaux, who participated as our municipal collective barman representative. He was not available for the meeting tonight, but I do appreciate his willingness to volunteer for that position.
Thank you very much. Right now, I think that's it. So I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. I'll make that motion under effect. Okay? Motion Whitman, second. Second hand over. Any discussion? Entertain a roll call vote, then vote to adjourn. Abbotton, excuse Cohasset.
Cohasset, yes.
Anover, yes. Anton.
Yes.
Noel, yes. Rockland, yes. Situate.
Yes.
Ian Whitman.
Yes.
Thank you very much, gentlemen, for a long night, but we got adjourned.